Not my first rodeo, but it's not that I do it all the time, so just share with me. All right, roll call, Brian?
All right, Ronald Knopf.
Present.
Kenneth Hall.
Present.
Bonnie Arm.
Here.
Trevor Stone.
Here.
Ronald Classic.
Here.
Judy Haldeman.
Here.
Jason Donahue.
Present.
Judy Cooksler is absent. Mayor Tony Pristen.
Present.
And Shen Lam.
Present.
We need approval of the minutes of a public work workshop meeting held on July third, twenty twenty five, and a regular public meeting held on July seventeenth, twenty twenty five. Do I have a motion?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Hall.
Second.
Second by Mr. Knopf. Any questions? All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Ayes have it. Hearing a person's interest, please come present, come up front and state your name and address. Anybody? Okay? Hello?
Good evening. Wayne Mary Danielsville, Pennsylvania, with the Northampton Exchange Club, and I understand that the-
Wayne, what's your first, last name?
Mary, M-E-R-Y.
Okay, thank you.
I understand the subject of the band show will be coming up, and I request to name the band show after Marty Fella. So I'm here to answer any questions, I'm happy to do so. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Anybody else? Okay. President's report, she did not give me any report, so I don't have anything to go over. Did you have anything from her?
No.
No.
Nope.
Okay, mayor's report?
Thank you. Two things, September thirteenth is right around the corner, that's our Northampton Uptown Street Fair. I've been in touch with our Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce Liaisons, and the fair is growing in leaps and bounds. It's gonna be another great fair, we just need the weather to cooperate much like it did today. So let's all hope and pray for a day like today to get out and about. Second, there's been a lot of concern about bicyclists in town. Had a long talk with the chief on different occasions, and our police force is well aware of it. They're doing all they can to keep everything as legal as possible, but bikes must follow the same rules that cars and other traffic follow in the streets. If you do have a problem or see that there are bicyclists riding recklessly and causing a problem, please give the police a call, and they'll handle it as soon as possible. We don't want any accidents or injuries, and I know many of us here who grew up in town biked everywhere. No e-bikes, no anything else, but we just pedaled. So in that vein, it's a great town to bicycle in, we have many resources to facilitate that, but if you're on the street and you're bicycling in the wrong lane, doing wheelies, things like that, be prepared to be stopped by the police. So keep that in mind, and let's keep everybody safe and legal. That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you, mayor. Okay, so what's the report? We have a couple of questions that we're gonna probably, she's gonna go through, so please.
There are just a couple of things I'd like to address. I know that there were some, there was some items, there was a bit of a skate park that was set out by members of the public on public property, right behind the building here, and that has been taken down. I know a lot of people referred to it as a skate park, but in fact, it was not constructed by the borough, it was on borough property, and it was in disrepair. So that is why it was removed, because it was unsafe, and it also occupied borough property and it, without a really, a true right to be there. So when it was taken down, actually, there were vermin, it kind of fell apart pretty quickly, pretty easily, which really reinforces the safety issues that it presented. So it was taken down for those reasons. There were concerns about, you know, if an injury were to have occurred there. We didn't want anyone getting hurt on borough property, we didn't want anybody using borough property in a way that it wasn't intended. With that, you know, there's always the possibility of the borough looking at constructing a borough sanctioned skate park, which of course would require funding, likely grant funding, and so that may be something that the borough looks at down the line. But what was called the skate park was really a hazard. It was dangerous, it was a liability concern, and it had to be taken down. So I wanted to address that. I also wanted to address the request, the naming request that we have before council tonight. Council has received, I think, some other naming requests that will be on future agendas. And also, we'll be looking at establishing an ordinance to set forth a procedure to help people know how to come forth and make a naming request of council, should they wish to do so. So that will be some helpful guidance that will be coming down the line. Unless anybody has any questions, end of report.
Thank you very much for those explanations of things. Reports from committees. We'll start with- Administration and Finance, Mr. Hall.
Thank you. There were one hundred and twenty-three live stream views of the August seventh council meeting. We are in receipt of a check for forty-two thousand five hundred and forty-three dollars, and I didn't say what was the name of that, my bad, you have it abbreviated.
Yeah, it's Pennsylvania Municipal Health International Consortium.
What he said, okay. For the, the, for the surplus for twenty twenty-four distribution. August fourth, the members of the Palmer Moravian Church toured the Atlas Cement Museum, and Linda Reimer Gerber, a former student of Ed Pannie and Moore Town Developmental School teacher, gave two hundred and fifty dollar donation to the Atlas Cement Museum. Thank you, Linda, for your supporting such a pivotal part of the borough. End of report.
Thank you. Building and Land Recreation, Ms. Hall, Ms. Haldeman?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Pool season has officially ended for twenty twenty-five. Thank you to all the staff for another wonderful year. Movies in the Park continues this week with Moana Two. Pre-show activities, including an appearance by Moana herself, begin at seven fifteen PM. The movie will begin around eight fifteen PM. Thank you, end of report.
Thank you. Fire and Health, is that Ms. Haldeman?
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. The Board of Health will now be, meet during the month of August. End of report.
Short and sweet, thank you. Public Works and Sewer, that's myself, and I'll read that. The three twenty-nine project is still on hold as we continue to wait for the new catch basin and the top graves. Work on the catch basin on Osborne Alley will start next week. Homeowners are, that are affected by the alley closures have a, had been sending letters to their homes. End of report. I will ask Mr. Stone to read the police report, do you mind?
Yes, Northampton Borough Police Department, July twenty, twenty twenty-five. We had six hundred and forty-eight dispatches, a hundred and fifty incident reports filed, and thirteen accident investigation. End of report.
Thank you. Are there any other reports from any committee members?
Can I ask what Osborne Alley is? I'm sorry.
Yeah, it's way higher off of LaBock Avenue. Yeah, it's the alley that runs north-south.
Okay.
Runs, runs the same direction as LaBock and Siegfried. Between like, between LaBock and Northampton.
He's not doing any map sports.
Okay, thank you.
So, any other community center?
No, there was no meeting.
No, no meeting or anything, okay, thank you. So unfinished business? Nothing?
No.
Okay, new business?
Yeah, that's what I started.
Thank you.
All right, consider selecting bid for fire training prop. At the August seventh council meeting, bids were open for the fire department's fire training prop. The only bid was from Taylor Systems LLC for a hundred and twenty-one thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars. The solicitor stated that after looking over the paperwork, everything is in order.
We need a motion to move forward with Taylor Lord Fire Prop. Do I have a motion?
Yeah, make a motion to accept the Taylor bid.
Mr. Stone?
Second.
Second by Ms. Haldeman. Any questions?
I just have one.
Question?
Seventy, just, just a little on the front page here. It's a thirty, thirty inch hole, like thirty inch hole, thirty foot by thirty foot.
Yeah, that's quite a big hatch.
That's, that's a big, that's a big hatch wall, I mean, I can get through. I might have trouble getting through the thirty by thirty inch, but the thirty foot by thirty foot I could make easily. Other than that, it was just, just, it wasn't gonna matter. Right in the front page.
Thirty inches is close to thirty feet.
It's just- It's on the specs and everything else throughout the hole, but I don't know if that was gonna mean anything, so I'm just-
No, it's, it's the minimums. It's acceptable, it's, it's a minor deviation.
Like I said, when you read in the back, it says a thirty inch everywhere else.
Good catch.
Just, it's, just a typing.
Any other questions?
Sorry.
No, that is a good question, but that kind of deviation is, you know, typographical, I think does not affect the, the legitimacy of it.
I have a question. Where is this located, where is this gonna be located at?
The Old Howardtown Dome.
The Old Howardtown Dome?
Yep.
Okay.
And, and-
Howardtown Road. By the creek there. Yeah.
Okay.
By Drive, yeah.
Banks, Banks Street?
Yeah.
Oh, okay.
Were the fences right now?
Yeah.
Dirt and stuff, okay. No question, no more questions?
No, that was mine, thank you.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. Okay.
This next one has a little change in the date, because I received a phone call today, shortened the amount of time for the circus. If I read it, it wasn't a typo, just a correction, it's today. Consider a request from Big Top Circus. Big Top Circus is requesting to bring the circus to the Borough Municipal Park from September eighth through the fourteenth. They would be placing a tent that is seventy-six foot by a hundred and six foot, and would hold enough for roughly two hundred and fifty guests per show. The shows will be held on weekdays at six PM, Saturdays at two thirty, five and seven thirty PM, and Sundays at two thirty and five PM. To do due diligence, I did call two different places that they have been before. C and J Catering and then the Park in Gettysburg, I spoke with them both today, and they said that they were some of the best tenants that they've ever had, that they left the grass exactly as it was when they were there. They were self-sufficient, that they never required anything other than water, just a water hookup. But they said you wouldn't even know they were there by the time that the last show was done, and they came into work the next morning, they were gone. So they were basically there, and then sight unseen gone, that you wouldn't even have known.
Circus has always been a great addition to the town, always well, well-attended and much appreciated by all the kids.
So we need a motion to move forward?
Big motion.
By Mr. Knopf, do I have a second?
I'll make it, 'cause I'm tired.
Ms. Haldeman made the second question?
No animals.
No, no manatees, no, no animals, just, when I brought that up, he did not, he did, he was very adamantly no.
And it's six days now, instead of fourteen?
It would be September, Monday, September eighth, that they would come in, and they would leave the fourteenth after their five PM show.
And, and when this came to our attention before, we had spoken a little bit in regard to fees, they, they will, they-
There would be a permit fee, I believe it's twenty-five dollars a day for it, and then a fee, because it would be a closed tent as well.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
Another question. Is this gonna put any burden on our police department? No? Okay, nothing more than a community day. Second, a second question is, with the movies in the park, also the football game, I think that's a home game that week. I looked at the schedule, is that gonna cause any conflict around?
I mean, we, we have so much parking here. We don't have a movie that night, because we decided to switch off the nights where there would be football games.
Very good.
As a, as a nice gesture, you know, with the school to not have competition. And so with this, now, at least nothing from us, from the school, I don't know clientele-wise, if they would be kind of deciding between the two, but, I mean, it would just be one show overall.
Okay. We don't need comments about the circus.
They're, they're doing the advertising and all that, and selling, they take care of everything, and it's, actually allows them longer to sell.
They take me- Yeah. Yeah, all they would be with us is the permit, and they could use the lawn, and they have the building permit for the structure.
Okay, do, you know, we had a motion.
Yep.
All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it. I guess we moved forward with our first circus for a while, you know, a while now.
It's been about ten years or so, at least.
Yeah.
Yeah. Surprised.
All right, consider a quest for permission to advertise for refuse collection and disposal. So after about five years of our previous contract, it is now time to advertise for our next contract for collection and disposal from residential units with collection, processing, and marketing of material, recyclables. The deadline for submissions will be Tuesday, September thirtieth, and bids will open, will be opened on Thursday, October second. The new contract will then be effective January first, twenty twenty six.
Do I have a motion to move forward with the bids for refuge removal?
I make the motion.
Motion by Ms. Haldeman?
Second.
Second by Mr. Hall. Any questions? No questions?
I'm sorry, I do have one, I apologize. Is there an interview process, or is it just a proposal that we, we get open, and our attorney reviews the proposal, or?
The bids, when they come in, you do a bid, so the RFP, Christopher Propose, sets forth dates
Okay.
by which bids are, must be submitted.
Okay.
The date that they will be opened, we provide for an interview period, should you wish to undertake interviews, and then we have a deadline by which you would announce the lowest response.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Okay, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Ayes have it, move forward with the open bid.
All right, consider a quest for handicap parking space. A resident in the area of three hundred block of Stewart Street is requesting a handicap parking space. Chief Kinningo recommends approval of the request.
Do I have a motion for the handicap parking request?
Motion.
Okay, Ms. Haldeman, second?
I'll be second.
Okay, second by Mr. Donahue. Any questions?
Yes, one more. Do we, do we ever follow through with the ordinance that we talked about in terms of tweaking our handicap parking ordinance? We do. I never saw that figured out, okay. Okay, thank you.
Okay. No more questions, all in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Handicap spa, parking spot is granted. Uh, next?
Consider a request of the Northampton Exchange Club. So the July third council meeting in Northampton Exchange Club submitted a request to recognize Marty Fella's contributions to the borough. They're placing signs on the band shell in Municipal Park with his name. There'd be two signs, one above the front office door, and the other on the back wall. At the July third meeting, the request is tabled.
I'd like to have a motion to move forward with the allowing of the signs on the band hall. There, there's actually a picture in your packet of the two signs that they would like to put on in the colors. Do I have a motion?
Big motion.
Mr. Knopf made a motion, I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Stone, questions? No questions? All in favor, say aye? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Two? Do we have to do a count, or is it two is all right? Okay, we're good.
Yep.
The ayes have it, the sign is granted for the Northampton Exchange and Marty Fella.
Consider a quest of the Northampton Exchange Club. Is that time of the year again to start thinking about the annual Jack Frost Parade? This year, for the seventy-sixth year of the parade, the Exchange Club is seeking approval to hold the event on Thursday, October sixteenth, starting at seven PM. The rain day will be Thursday, October twenty-third, at the same time.
Do I have a motion for the Exchange Club Halloween Jack Frost Parade, seventy-sixth annual?
Motion made.
Ms. Haldeman, do I have a second?
Second.
By Ms. Haldeman. Any questions?
Point of order? We also have a borough council that night, so we may have to make a motion to-
They're rejected to make a motion.
Okay, very well, thank you.
Good catch. No more questions? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Ayes have it, thank you, the Exchange Club for the seventy-sixth annual. Okay, anything else? Okay, report from council? We'll start with Mr. Knopf.
Alrighty.
Can I throw you off?
Yeah, my wife, Pat Knopf, manager of the Northampton Farmers Market, her and I had the privilege to go to the Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce Award Ceremony last evening, where she received a grant for the farmer's market signs. The certificates are signed by County Executive Lamont LaClure, who was one of the speakers, and Congressman Ryan McKenzie. Also, Tony Ionella was a speaker. Also, we met a lot of sponsors and had a very good time there. End of report.
Thank you. Mr. Donahue, we'll come back to you.
I have nothing to make.
You have nothing?
Nothing.
It's all right.
I have nothing.
I can sit up here one time and do that.
All right, let's flip to over here, Mr. Hall.
Uh, just a couple, just a reaffirmation that they did close the Canal Street. I did see one today, it kind of came down. There is proper signage, especially for the people who are going westbound, because they get up there and they didn't see the sign, and that was back for, the one when you're coming across the bridge eastbound, it's definitely there, you see, you can't turn, and you didn't already pass it, you pass your alternates. By coming westbound, there is one on Minkinale, it says a detour for Seton City Street. I saw somebody turn, they, they quick turned into Tryboro and then came back out, but it'll become a thing, it's gonna be closed like the manager said, it's gonna be closed for twenty months.
Sixty-four days, probably to be in October.
So, so when they did tear it up, the road's torn, it's just down to stone and everything, just wanna reaffirm, get that out there, so people do know that and pay attention to the signs. A question for the chief, walking the dog out of my area, I did notice a lot of arms stickers and stuff on cars, I mean, more than, is it something that they're just really pushing right now? Or why, I mean, in a two, three street stretch, I seen ten.
It's, it's like a blitz. I have to move the guys around, but I had a couple of guys on that detail.
Got you. I mean, and I, I know they're all warranted, I know, but it's something that they were just specifically working on, or, or whatever, but-
A lot of it is in auto, the expired inspection, registration things.
And there, and there is a lot of them out there, I understand, and I know they're catching up with, I just, it was like in a trip up to Redneers and back, I'm thinking like, oh, these are- It's good to see, I mean, I see it's out there and getting done, it's, it's well needed. Parking is a premium in, in some of the streets. Other than that, end of report, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Stone?
Uh, yes, thank you. The refuse collection proposal request is quite extensive. Anyway, how often do you have to use the word riffraff, right?
Not often, not often enough.
I, I saw that, I actually, I actually, you know, I caught my eye, I'm like, ah, yeah, makes perfect sense, that's part of it. Yep, it was the best part, but anyway.
Could be the word of the council meeting, riffraff.
Riffraff.
Was that the word that? It just came to me, I didn't ask for it. The riffraff.
That's all I got, end of report.
Thank you, Mr. Hall, Ms. Haldeman?
All I have is one more, thank you to our pool staff, as our season has come to an end, to thank them for the job that they did this summer. You know, everybody was safe and happy, and, but we, we appreciate that, we had a great pool manager, and all the staff under Neath Ms. Torrey did a wonderful job. So thank you from the, I guess, chair of that committee, I appreciate it. I think the two gentlemen sitting over there calling themselves the borough manager and assistant borough manager have indicated we have some work to do with the pool, so that is obviously something that is going to be important in our town to discuss and consider. Obviously, our pool needs work, we, I guess we really need to have some deep thought about if we can afford to continue to carry on with something that's a wonderful tradition in our town. A lot of us have good memories, but it's, it's gonna be costly, so we, we really need to consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Mayor? You, you have your report ready?
I have my report ready.
Just give me a second chance.
I'm good.
Trying to make this a little-
I'm trying to, trying to set a record.
So, I just have, I just, a couple of small updates on the Small Business Spotlight campaign. So we are working on organizing a team of a few individuals for the campaign, and then we're also working on securing the meeting spot, as well as the meeting date. And then, right now, I'm working on creating the social media pages.
Thank you, I answered a few of my questions that I had for you after, after the meeting, so.
All right.
So when are you, when are you planning on starting this, as soon as you get your committees and stuff set?
Yes, as soon as I get that set, and then I'm probably gonna do it around the first or second week of school, which is next week or the week after that.
Okay. Did you reach out to the Lehigh Valley Chamber?
I have not.
Because the gentleman inside, he just got a cramp from them, so he probably has good connection. And also Zach Mako's office would be another good resource to reach out. And also, when you said social media, I, I seen on the sixty-nine news, they have good news, and it's like, one of the nice things, I like to watch the news instead of all the negativity. So the good news would be a great report to see that, how our young council people in our borough of our, our high school is helping our businesses in our Northampton borough. So I would reach out to sixty-nine news, I think that would be a great story to promote, Northampton is all it can do. But thank you for all you did with that already.
Yep.
Council president, now I will jump in. I did have a conversation this morning with our executive vice president, with the Greater Lehigh Valley Chamber of Commerce, and, and Shen's gonna be invited to be on the street for street fair and help out with that, and be a part of that, and get herself familiarized with other people from the chamber. So we're looking to get her actually to a board of governors meeting in the future.
Fantastic.
There you go.
Nice, thank you, mayor.
You're welcome.
So I only have a few things, again, I would like to thank all the, the workers, the volunteers, at the farmers market, at the pool, movies in the park, the two nights that I've been there, it's just been outstanding. It is really showing how our community is reaching out and doing things. So a great big thank you to all them, and the Knopf family, for all you did with the farmers market also is great. To the chief, a little bit about the speed still, a couple of these cars in the morning are still zooming around in town. I know it's tough, but school started next week, I know you're gonna have your hands full anyways, but.
In particular, the location?
Or actually, right in front of the rec center at five thirty in the morning. It seems like there are a lot of cars who are on the treadmills, people are commenting, and it's like, what do you want me to do? Run out there and put a flag up? So if you could, it seems like it would be a good area to start.
Thank you.
And the forty-eight block of Main Street, ten thirty, eleven o'clock till midnight sometimes, and after. You can tell they're not even stopping at the stop sign.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, that's all right.
Oh, and I'd just like to talk about the crime watch, I know we missed it last month because we didn't have it, right? It got pushed off. So again, with everything going on in our town, in our borough for bicyclists and things like that, it'd be a great way to see, there's a lot of people that come on a regular basis to crime watch. I would like to see more people there and bring your concerns to the police department. It's just a great way to show, again, a community involvement. So that's all I have, and in my report, what else do I need to do here?
Announcements.
Announcements, I thought we just did them.
No, here it is.
Oh, that's right, you get to add it. Okay, go ahead.
I don't really have anything, I was going to bring about the pool, also, I think with some, with any of this, end of the season, there would need to be some upgrades to the pool, so I think it would need to be beneficial to the council to maybe have committee, maybe four committees that'll talk about some things, and see how we want to move forward with it. And that's all I have.
Before you go, Brian, I do have things, on the other note, I have two notes here going. Where are we at with the street paving? I know we talked about it, we keep on talking about street paving, are we doing anything this year?
We just got the compiled list of how much it would cost for us to do bearing, which was, maybe we could say about ninety-three thousand dollars cheaper for us to do. So we're trying to figure out the schedule to make sure that our guys can do it when they can do it, because we still have the three twenty-nine project, and then they have to install about four laterals or so throughout the town.
What about the status of UGI repairing the streets that they ripped up and they never really went back? I thought there were still streets, streets that were still not completed when, when they were finished.
Is there areas that they haven't gone back to? If there is any specific areas, there you go. I'll keep writing down, but I can't think of any, I know they're gonna be starting some areas soon.
Well, it seems like after they, they finished, and that street was done, they already put a hole in it, like literally, a couple days later, and put another couple things. But I thought the rest of Ten Street, not just an area of it, I thought the whole street was done. They, they went, the whole street should be repaid by them, shouldn't it?
I don't think they touched the entire area of Ten- I don't think they touched the entire area of Tent Street, I think there was a section where they kind of skipped over. If I, I, I'll look into it, try to think probably through, but I thought there was an area.
Yeah, the fourth, the four hundred walk, they skipped over.
Yeah, maybe like, a little east of, um, Siegfried, maybe even Northampton, I think in that area, they, they touched anything in there.
Yeah, skipped over. Who's responsible for Twenty-first Street at the CBS? So, the area.
City State, yeah.
Cause it, did the state turn that up?
Or unless it's like the, the util, or did the utility weren't there?
I think the utilities are, are tore up for the bridge, so, that is getting to be a real tough area, many comments made about the poor conditions there.
Uh, we might have to, they might have a contact with one of those people down there, maybe we can reach out and try, but.
Yeah, we'll try, cause I know, I know their plan is the state to pave it, but not till after the bridge is done. Right, right. So, we can find it, there's some, we can see if we have a contact and look into it.
Can they at least put, I'm sorry, can they at least put like a macadam ramp, right where you get onto the bridge on the Northampton side?
Okay.
Like with the small cars like I have, the Saturn, it's real low to the, I mean, I almost hit the ground there. It really bumps. And the other side, it, it seems like they smoothed it out.
If we get a contact, we'll try to see what we can find out. Maybe we can reach out to people who have tended out from the three-twenty-nine job, maybe they have a.
Yeah, they would probably, I would think they would have a.
We'll see what we can find out.
Anything on a street sweeper, to be borrowed or even used for a day or two?
We did, we did borrow one for some projects.
We did?
For, um, for small areas, but, a lot of the other, one of the times we went to go, one of the other municipalities, theirs is down as well, so, it's, it's, yeah.
Um, again, this is going out to the residents, I know we ask our borough employees to do an awful lot, but if the grate is in front of your house where the water runs into, and you see a lot of leaves and grass filled in there, you're just asking for trouble if it backs up. And as we get into the rainy season with some hurricanes, and we just had a good rainstorm, and you can see it pu- puddling on our streets, just go out there, please, and take a little bit of time and maybe clean out that grate right in front of your property, where the grass and the leaves are, are, you know, filling up. We, we'd be a big help to our borough and our public works to make sure that we don't have those kind of problems, and then also maybe even avoid an accident or somebody going through there and hydroplaning. So, I just ask that as a public announcement, please. Um, that's all I have, and the rest will be for, oh, you, your turn now, Brian, I'm sorry.
Yeah, currently Jared, I don't, I don't have all that much, um, no, I'm just. Movies in the park, uh, we have about six left, we have one tomorrow night, and one at two.
I hear that Nwana might be there.
Um, then we're off next week for football and the fun, we have Paddington, um, there will be mini-moves there. If anyone would like to see the mini-moves, we can thank Megan for that, Megan has a connection on the mini-movie front. Um, and then we're off, and that's the fifth, and then we're off until actually the end of the month, the twenty-sixth on that one, um, and then we have a few in October as well. We're gonna do, for one of the days, we are gonna do a trunk or treat with it as well, um, twenty-sixth of September is gonna be emergency responders night, fire departments agreed to come, we're working to get the canine, Officer Perry there to do a demonstration. So, we have some exciting things planned, uh, coming up for the next few weeks, or I should say months at this point, um, but, uh, but yeah, other than that.
Can I, can I add one thing?
Yeah.
When you brought up about the emergency responders, and it's passed now, cause it was last week or whatever, but, a lot of municipalities have it, and North County has one a little earlier where they have. But, uh, usually, the Americas, uh, them, uh, National Night Out, that the borough should do something with the good fire department that you have and good police force and EMS. Uh, Leah Township has a big one, they have it up there in E D Trail Park, uh, but we don't, and maybe something, something we wanna look into and.
Absolutely.
Uh, it, it, it's a good P R type thing.
Yep.
Uh, we have a whole year now to sort of work on it, but it, it's just something to try and piece out thought, you know, and here you see it, you see it on the news like Channel sixty-nine, everybody who was to these different ones. Go ahead, sorry.
Sounds good, I agree. Stephanie, you need to say that at the executive session.
I actually had that on my notes.
Oh, you did?
Yeah, I did.
You need to say.
Do we have any executives?
We, we had an executive session this evening to discuss, uh, personnel matters.
You did, thank you.
That's all I have.
Okay. I really wanna hit that hammer one time, I was thinking about it.
Hammer, where's our hammer?
Meeting.
Megan, run it on the back a little bit.
Um, anyway, um, I guess I got to do the next thing about pay the bills. Do I have a motion to pay the bills?
Motion made to pay the bills.
Ms. Almond, do I have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Donahue, questions? I have a question.
Unless, Ms. Holdeman, you have a few?
No, no, please, you go first.
Um, Nazareth Army and Navy for two hundred and seventy dollars.
They, so, a lot of the people used to go to the Army and Navy up at Whitehall, but their supply has been slowly diminishing, so they went to the one in Nazareth.
Okay. Uh, what's Simic LLC for nine hundred and forty-five dollars?
Electrical repairs at the Sewers Plant.
Okay. Uh, EM Power for thirty-seven oh five.
Empower.
Oh, Empower.
It's retirement.
Yeah, retirement funds, it's, uh.
Pension.
Pension, yeah, it was.
Empower?
Yeah.
Empower, yeah.
I was just gonna comment that, I thought that a lot of details on the A P report were so much better that I didn't really have to ask a lot of questions because they're very detailed, so, I like that.
James, Jameson has been very, uh, very gung-ho about making this, he did the new format, and he's trying to make everything as descriptive as possible with no cutoffs, and everything is.
Avoid questions at council meetings.
Exactly. He said that if, his goal, I think his goal now is to get it so there's as little questions as possible, he doesn't even watch them.
There was only three, but, uh, there is nothing on about sludge, which is a fan favorite, and there's nothing about P P L lighting, so, did we not have those bills this month?
Um, no, they would be, he, um, we have kind of, so with P P L now, rather than have them all be coming throughout the month, James has got it worked, that now all of the bills will come at one time.
Okay.
Um.
And nothing about sludge either.
Yeah, that's, uh, with last month, we had two last month, because of the way that it fell with the, uh, three A Ps last month.
That's all I have, so, all in favor to pay the bills? Oh, you have more mission, more questions?
I do.
Oh, okay, Ms. Holdeman, thank you for keeping my night though a little bit longer.
More, my, not a question as much as, um, we have quite a happy American rock salt, so are we starting to stockpile already for winter, that's a purchase of.
Because with the shortage that there was last year, he wanted to get ahead of you.
Could I have, uh, yeah, just stole my thunder, so we're catching.
I sit next to him, I have to kind of keep up pace.
It's so rare that I ask something that sounds intelligent, come on.
I'm sorry, scrub it.
No, 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 I, no, no, but that, that was, is, I, I was gonna ask, is there still a shortage of, of rock salt, is it a concern that we have for this winter again? We don't know, is it a hard question?
It's hard to say right now, but right now, I know the bids are full, we have lots of rock salt down there right now, pre, in prepared for.
Okay.
So, with the way that the rock salt goes too, is we put in the request of how much we would like for the year, and we have to honor only sixty percent of it. So, we put in, Rich wanted to do more this year, cause he wanted to make sure that we were prepared, so we could do this now, and then if we need more throughout the season, we can do it.
Do we buy that, like, as a, as a, like, through the state, like, as a, it's, it's always a contract that we have, like, almost like that CoStar concept that we.
Yep. Yeah, you have to go through the s-, uh, state's website and put in the amount you want, by mid-March, I think it is?
Mid-March, I think, also.
And if you wanna buy from Horowitz, they'll sell it to you, couple the price.
Yep.
Did we ever dig that up and, like, rotate the material that's in there?
It gets broken up before it gets mixed, so.
Seem like the same, same stuff's just, just back there, kinda.
It was pretty empty before, right?
Like a glacier right now.
Yeah.
Um, it was pretty low.
Yeah, it was. Counting back the last thing for a start. Yeah.
There's probably salt in there if they're from twenty years ago still.
Mr. Glass.
Any more questions? Yeah, any more questions? All in favor?